How do we know when the equipment's on?
I would just, just a couple of seconds and then just.
Okay. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the April 26 meeting, which were sent to us previously. If no one has any additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading and approve.
I will make a motion to waive the reading and approve.
Got a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, the, we're gonna be a little out of order on the agenda because of our missing member. So, the first case that we will hear is 2022-8 at 307 Broadway, Concrete Garden Incorporated.
Good evening.
You need to introduce yourself and give us your address.
Okay. Vladimir Samuel, 24 Clark Ave, Chelsea, Massachusetts.
Alex Yo-Yo, 37 Eleanor Street, Chelsea, Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you. Give us your, your case.
So, we would like to, Mr. DePriest, do you have the slide that I sent you?
Yeah, just give me a second.
I could resend it to you if you'd like.
And I remember copying it, but I don't see it. Let me, just give me a second, I will find it.
I just sent it again, so it might be at the top.
Pardon?
I just sent it again.
Okay. You sent it again?
Yeah, so I just sent it, so maybe if you refresh it, it'll pop up. It'll be on. All right, perfect. So, like I said before, my name is Vladimir Samuel. I'm the president of Concrete Garden. This is Alex Yo-Yo, he's my partner, he's the vice president. We're both, I think we can go to the next slide. We're both long, longtime Chelsea residents. We both graduated Chelsea High. Alex has started a trucking company called Yo-Yo Trucking. I myself, I've worked in countless retail, hospitality spaces, as well as I have a science background. I'm currently, I should achieve my degree by December in chemistry and, yeah, we want to open a dispensary in Chelsea Square and I think we are right for it. We hold economic empowerment and social equity standings with the Cannabis Commission. And, yeah, we plan to offer delivery as well as a dispensary space and we're looking to also have cultivation, but that won't be in Chelsea. We can go to the next page. So, I myself, I'm the co-founder and the president, he's the vice president. Elon Rodriguez is our community outreach. He graduated from Syracuse with his bachelor's and he got his master's from U-Mac, no, no, from Boston College. He is currently a dean at an academy in Newton. Muna Kenkson is our communications and our public relations. He currently works for the Cambridge Public Library. He worked for the Cambridge Mayor as well and he still works in the city of Cambridge right now. And Dan Carpenter for our human resources. He actually worked, he ran the poker room in Encore, Boston Harbor, when they first opened. He has a plethora of experience with personnel as well as hospitality. He worked in several casinos in the DC Maryland area as well, so we're happy to have him on board as well. That's pretty much our personnel. We have a medical liaison as well, Jenny Melguizo. She is, she's going for her doctorate right now at Yale and, yeah, that's our medical liaison. And we can go to the next page. Oh, this is the floor plan, so I'll walk you guys through it. So, this is pretty much, this is Broadway. This is the main entrance here. You come through the hallway and this is the main entrance to the dispensary through the hallway. You have to, you'll be checked in at a security checkpoint here, at which point then you will be brought to the secondary security desk after you're buzzed into the store and they will then log you into our system. At that point, this is our counter service where, where the, back here is our storage area where we will hold the cannabis during hours of operation. After hours of operation, before and after hours of operation, everything will be stored in a vault, in the vault area. We'll be taking deliveries from Division Street. This back door here leads Stars. We had spoken with the zoning board and we're probably gonna put a hallway to split it so that we have our own enter, our back entrance. I have already spoken to the landlord and he's okay to, so I sent it over to my architect and he's gonna put it together on the floor plan for me. And up, the upstairs area is here, so this is downstairs, this is upstairs. Up here we'll have our break room and our offices as well as our security equipment to monitor the security of the store. Think we can go to the next slide? Oh, so for parking, we're not gonna allow employees to park in the downtown area just so, because there is a bunch of parking there, but we don't want to take up any parking with our employees. We, we have two parking spaces at 174th Street, but that is, that's just for employees, it's not for, it's not for customers. That's why we're going for our street parking permit relief for our special permit. We're also looking at the office space, but that has nothing to do with the parking itself. That'd just be for where, where we have, how's our, there'll be no cannabis at the office space. We already looked at 90 and 100 Evernave and we're making our decision between the two. Oh, for security, we'll always have two security guards on site. One will be out front to deal with customers as they come in and then there will be another in the dispensary itself. Customers have to be buzzed into the store. All cannabis-related deliveries will be taken on Division Street between the hours of 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM as to not cause more traffic for before and after school. We won't be taking any night deliveries for loss prevention reasons and things of that nature. Any FedEx deliveries, they'll be brought in through the front and signed for by security. And we're going to have a plethora of cameras and security devices in place, panic buttons and things of that nature so that everything is secure in the store. Go to the next slide. That was it. I'll be, I'll take some questions if you have any now.
Okay, questions, comments, folks?
Can you describe how, deliveries are gonna be made on the Division Street side? Like, is there enough cars? Sorry. Can you describe how deliveries are gonna be handled on Division Street and how other cars are gonna be able to pass by?
So, the way we'll set it up is that, well, we will have security and our stock manager come out to take the delivery directly. We will take the delivery from the vehicle and then what we will ask that, they park the vehicle on 4th Street so that we can then make sure that the delivery is perfect and everything is there. And then after we, we check the delivery twice, then we'll allow them to kinda go so that we're not blocking the street.
What are the proposed operating hours?
When we came in front of the, the first board we came to, I said it was 10 to 9, but after speaking with the HR, he said it'd probably be better for 9 to 9 as far as setting the shifts up. So, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Okay. Okay.
Seven days a week?
I'm sorry?
Seven days a week?
Seven days a week.
And you're leasing the space?
We are.
From the property? Do you have a lease in place now?
We do.
Okay. May I ask, the duration, what is the current length of that lease?
It's a five-year lease.
Five years?
Yes.
Okay. With options to renew?
With option to renew, yes, with the option to renew at the end of the five years.
Where, so, John, can you scroll back to their floor plans? So, we're looking, you know, the bottom of the page is Broadway.
Yes.
The back is Division Street.
Yes.
Where will you be storing trash?
Trash will be kept in the back hallway. So, only we will have access to the back hallway because we're going to put a split up.
Okay. And, John, will they need private trash collection or?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
But there will be no cannabis paraphernalia that will be in the trash in the back hallway.
Okay. No, I just wondered, given just how things are laid out on that block, where it would, from where it would be collected. So, it will be stored in your back hallway?
Exactly.
Picked up via Division Street?
Exactly.
Okay, okay. And I'm just going through some of the questions in the report that John provided to us and important one. Wait, I'm sorry, lost my train of thought. Will Chelsea Police be given access to security, like camera security footage?
Yeah, I've, I, I had a meeting with, with Chelsea Police and if needed, yes, they will be given access.
Okay. And I guess my only concern, I mean, I think, you know, the plan you've laid out is a good one. I, I appreciate that you're Chelsea.
Yes.
You know, that you grew up here, that you're from here. I think that is very important with these sorts of businesses. My concern lies with your landlord.
Yes.
You know, he, there's a documented history of problems with that property. And infractions, tickets issued by inspectional services and I'm not, you know, as, as a tenant, you know, I'm not sure what we as a board can do to try to force, you know, the landlord to stay in compliance with all building codes. You know, I don't know, is there anything in your lease agreement? Is it even possible to put those, you know, those sorts of conditions into a lease agreement?
Good question. Yeah, I don't know. Do you have any sense about this?
I doubt it. I, the city manager does want me to make it known that he, the city administration is vehemently opposed to issuing license or permits at this site because of the violations.
The city manager wants to make it known that the city administration is vehemently opposed to issuing a permit for any use at this site because of the landlord's lack of compliance with code and zoning requirements. I think the board would be concerned also that if conditions were placed on this permit, whether they would be followed or not.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah, and I think, you know, those are real concerns. I mean, it's, I mean, not about your proposal.
Mm-hmm.
I wanna make that very clear.
I understand completely.
It's, you know, the concerns are with this landlord. So, I mean, have you?
I have, I, I talk to him like every two, three days.
No, I just, I'm just curious if, you know, was this, is this the only site that you've looked at? Are there other?
No, this is the only site that I've looked at, yeah. In the, in the Chelsea Square area, yes.
Okay, so you wanna be within Chelsea Square?
I would like to, yes.
Okay, okay.
I talked to him every day and, I mean, I came down here with him last week so he could pull the violations so I could see what they are myself. And then he, I believe he has a meeting with the city attorney this week until, I'm pretty much on him to start pulling permits pretty much and doing what he has to do because...
But, but no permits have been pulled yet?
No permits have been pulled yet.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a bit, at a bit of a loss really to, just speaking for myself, to be able to make a decision until the landlord has addressed the outstanding issues with the property before I can feel comfortable voting on whether or not to grant you this permit, you know, the permits necessary to build out your business.
Okay.
And I'm not, you know, I don't know what to say as to, you know, what a next, what next step should be for you, for us, but that's, that's all I have to say on the topic.
Well, good points. So, I don't know the answer to your question, except that in reading the letter from Mr. McAtier, it sounds as though, well, the final sentence in the letter is, "All violations must be addressed and corrected prior to final approval of your proposed project." And this is a letter to you, so I assume you've read that. At the same time, I personally feel that it's a little awkward to ask us to, to vote to recommend the approval of this project, given the facilities that you're going to move into are, I won't say egregiously, but seriously in violation of municipal regulations. Anybody else wanna address this and?
I mean, I guess, I mean, the only thing I can think of is that, I guess that it be continued? Is that, John, is that a possibility to continue this until such time as the landlord addresses the violations?
Okay.
And then we come back?
That's fine with me.
With you again? I mean, I know it's not, you know, it'll mess up your timeline, but I just don't see any other way to, to really consider?
That's fine.
And vote on the, the application until these violations have been resolved?
So, say that we come back in a month and I am able to get him to pull some permits and actually start some of that work, will that be some progress shown?
Well, if you are to continue, you have to continue it to a date stated. So, if you wanna continue it, I suggest you continue it to your June meeting to allow the petition to come back?
The July meeting.
And identify what steps are being done, taken to address this.
You mean to the July, to the July meeting?
To the...
Or June?
It'll probably be July because we're seeing them in July because we're not gonna have a full board in June.
Right, so, right, but you want them, you want the board, this board to meet, make the recommendation before the ZBA?
Okay.
Does their vote. So, I would say to the June meeting.
Okay.
It gives them a month to at least identify what is being done to address those.
Okay.
That's an option for the board.
And it would be helpful to have a site plan that labels these different activities happening around the site, where cars are parked, where the deliveries take place so that we can, you know, understand how the operation works.
No problem.
And in addition, I'd also like clarification about if you're gonna be changing the outside of the building or just the inside?
We're just gonna be working on the inside of the building for right now.
Okay. So, I guess I will make a motion that we continue this application to the June meeting.
Second?
I'll second that.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
See you in June.
Still want Mimi, huh?
I thought Mimi sent an email saying she was coming.
Not coming?
When you opened your email, there was one from Mimi saying...
Yeah, I saw that. She said she's on, Mimi's on her way.
She's on her way? All right, okay. All right, next we'll hear case 22, 2022-09 at 157 Washington Avenue.
Good evening, everyone. David Midland representing the petitioner, Wash Ave GBMA LLC. Madeline Garcia, who's the manager of the LLC and the business owner. So, we are here to propose adding a second floor to Ms. Garcia's real estate office at 157 Washington Avenue. In addition to the real estate office, there are two small business spaces in the building. The proposal is to add three one-bedroom units and one two-bedroom unit above with a roof deck overlooking the parking area in the back. This is the BR2 district and the intent of the BR2 district is to encourage uses residential over retail business. It's right in Cary Square. John, do you have the most recent renderings? This is the plot plan. It's really a beautiful building. The, the last one that we had brought before the ZBA?
This one? I think it might be this one. I think it might be, is this it?
No, that's not the one. There was a later submission right before the last.
Oh, yes. Yeah, let me find that.
Okay. But anyway, we're looking to this board for parking relief as well as the extension of a non-conforming use, a prior non-conforming use. That was a picture of the present building. As far as Ms. Garcia is concerned, this is a perfect project for this neighborhood. Other buildings have been, been constructed there. That's the one. It's a little sideways, but that's, that's a rendering of the finished product. Since we appeared before the ZBA, the architect has redrawn the parking plan. Part of the issue is that the way things work now, the, the parking lot behind the building is shared with TORF, but there is a property line down the middle. Right now, the two, two owners cooperate as far as parking for funerals, backing out of the parking spaces on Ms. Garcia's land, but there's no guarantee that'll continue in the future, so they have redrawn the parking to allow for, is it, John, do you have the new submission that Madeline submitted today?
To allow for six vehicles.
Six spaces. And two of them would be tandem. Madeline, if you wanna?
Of course.
Point it out?
So, I'll...
Oh, you, that's right. That's the...
There you go. So, basically, there would be a spot here, there's an existing garage here that fits a vehicle. This part of the garage in the back will hold the trash cans for the commercial spaces. So, this will be here, this is parking, and then tandem here and here. Then, this, I'm imagining a fence here and parking here and here. So, originally, we thought maybe three, but after speaking with the architect and just looking at things and moving things around, we decided that this would most likely make more sense because of the fact that we do run a real estate office and we're there from 9 to 5 and most of the agents are working from the office as well. And plus, the two businesses that I have, one of them is my daughter. She does a brow, like beauty. And so, she's there two to three days a week, 9 to 5, sometimes 12 to 5. And then the other person that's there is well underneath, same thing. They work with applications and on specific days. So, my thought was that it would allow for the spaces and once 5 o'clock comes around, the whole parking lot is empty because businesses are no longer there, so.
So, I'm sorry, it's not clear to me, how many spaces? It sounds like you're gonna have to have spaces dedicated to the businesses and to any residents.
Correct.
So, how many parking spaces are available to, to residents?
So, I would have to say that for the commercial, I'm sorry, for the residential units, we would have this side of the building. We're thinking that this would be like a fence in between so that the other trash cans would be in the back of the building. So, we have the ones for the commercial and then here. So, we're designating this area for the residential, which would be the evening parking, of course. And then we're deciding that the other area would be for the commercial.
But roughly, how many, so, what is it?
Oh, spaces, sorry.
Two spaces?
So, there's two here right now.
Okay.
I mean, honestly, we could always, these are actual spaces, you just can't back out of them, so if somebody wanted to park here, but just so that it makes sense and you can turn, excuse me, turn correctly and be comfortable, I just did the two.
Okay, so two, there would be two resident spaces?
For the residential. But since they're parking at night, they would essentially have access to all of them because we're there, we're out of there at 5.
Yeah, but that assumes people remove their cars during the day, which not everybody does.
Right, right.
Okay.
Also, the other factor is this is right on public transportation.
Correct.
Three bus lines, the commuter rail and the silver lining all within about half a mile of the building.
Yes.
So, it's really the classic new urban development where one-bedroom apartments, it's not anticipated that every unit owner, rather, tenant will have a car. And the new apartment will understand that it's still required.
Correct. And, and we have the blue bikes too, literally across the street.
So, these are rental units?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and there are three one-bedrooms, one two-bedroom.
There's still a thought that we may be able to work out and use the derangement with TORF in the store, but that hasn't been done yet.
Right. We don't...
We've started speaking, but not sure if that will happen. Right now, it's just an informal agreement that everyone cooperates. We don't know if that'll continue in the future or not.
Correct.
Prepared for the, that eventuality.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, and that's, you know, that's not something that we can take into consideration. I mean, an informal agreement can go away.
That's right.
What type of landscaping are, had you been considering for the property?
Sure, so if we go to the original, so that I can give you an idea?
I'm sorry?
If we can go to the first...
Actually, before you leave that screen.
Back to the...
Yeah, back to the original.
Back to the revised?
So, what we're gonna do is, the city has asked for us to plant two trees there. We love the idea. My only concern with this here is that when the bus, the bus actually stops, I'm worried that it branch, so that's the only thing I'd have to sit down with the public word the public works to discuss that and see what we can do to make that beautiful because obviously I want that to look nice. All of the original, remember, this was a funeral home. So all of the landscaping is very plain, very, so that's all going to change. I want to add color. The awning is an existing awning, so I want to make sure that we add light, lighting underneath it. We've added all of the lighting around the building, and it's actually going to be black. He couldn't do it in black. He made it gray, but I want them to match the roof, which will be black. And then all of this is going to be all brand-new landscaping, nice colors, nice flowers that they change throughout the seasons. And then if you go for makeup green space, there's a patio in one of the, of the pictures of the renderings where it shows there's, I don't know if you have that, John?
Is it in this PDF?
Yep. So this is the front view from the side. And then, and then if we go, I believe, one more up. Here it is. So because we have to make up for the green space, the TORF did mention in the last meeting that they were just a little bit concerned, not a little, but they had some concerns, which I totally understood. They are a funeral home, and if people are coming to mourn their family members or friends, they wouldn't want to see that. So I, along with David, are proposing a wall that's the same type of siding so that it looks very nice, but that it's private, so that anything that's happening within the patio, you can't see from their parking lot as their people are entering their parking lot to go to the funeral home.
So there, I'm seeing what looks like trees?
These are planters with like beautiful plants and.
But so along.
Oh, over here?
Oh, no. I'm looking at where the roof deck is, the roof patio.
Okay, yeah.
So what you're proposing is a wall there?
Yes. So I, after they were here for the last meeting, they mentioned that they didn't want to see that, and I totally got it. So I'm proposing a wall so that it has the same type of siding.
Okay.
And it's nicely done, but that no one can overlook the parking lot. In addition to that, we see a lot of casket deliveries, so I'm sure tenants don't want to see that either. So it kind of goes both ways, so it totally makes sense. So that's what we would do here. We would do a really nice wall so that it's high enough and that they can have enjoyment of their patio, but not either, you can't see either way.
And there are also lots of possibilities these days for privacy fences that are very pretty, allow some light to get through but still block the view. Sometimes you see them with alternating boards or different things, so that can be worked out. The other thing I would mention is that the Historical Commission had a meeting regarding this project, and they had a couple of concerns, one of which was the windows, and I think this, this plan addresses that. It's just a very interesting building. Madeline might not want to mention this, but they want sort of, some sort of historical plaque regarding the history of the building, and she's trying to forget it was a funeral home, so that may not happen.
Right. And in addition to, we did the extra homework, and my understanding is that the businesses were that, I went back to the owner of the, to kind of find out the history. And the one thing I did find out is, this is Cary Square Club, and that's where they started.
Oh, wow.
So it's, it's interesting. That's, so that's where they are now, and that's where they started years ago, but that's the only real business that I've been able to, because my understanding is that there was a house in the back. So that's pretty much what I've been able to find out about what other type of businesses have been there over the years, and the history of the Cary Square, starting there in that basement, is way before this was built. This was built in 65, December 65.
And the other thing I would mention is, Madeline is born and raised in Chelsea, has her business in Chelsea, always has had her business in Chelsea, and, you know, listening to you at the prior hearing, we know that that's very important to the city, and Madeline contributes an awful lot business-wise to the community, and she's, she's attached to the community for life.
Absolutely.
Will you be painting the parking spaces?
I'm sorry?
Will you paint the parking spaces on the pavement?
So I could definitely do that if that's a requirement, just to, like to mark them and absolutely, yeah.
Are you changing the curb cuts?
No, they're, they're all there. Curb cuts do not need to be done in any way. They're all there.
Okay. And are you increasing the green space or decreasing?
I am actually, because this is 543 square feet, and so this is non-existing at this moment, so absolutely.
Okay, with a permeable surface of the lot, is that increasing or decreasing?
I'm sorry. The question again, I didn't hear you.
Concern is runoff, and if you're adding more pavement to the site, then it's.
Oh, no.
Contributing to the problem.
No.
Nothing's being added, and the footprint of the building will be exactly the same.
Correct.
And the footprint of the gardens are the same?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Can you point out how that car on the right gets, drives into this?
So this is actually a curve cut, sorry, right here. So that's how it goes in, and then it extends all the way into the other sidewalk because this is their parking lot to go in and out. So it's existing here for this garage, and that's the garage that I spoke to you about earlier. So that's all the curve cut is existing. The only thing that I will change also is, if there's a chain link fence right here, I would change that to wrought iron and make it nice with nice baskets so that I can put some flowers. That's the only thing that I thought of after the fact that I thought was neat. So that's right here.
Have you thought about if you will make the, the parking spaces for tenants, if they'll have to like pay an additional fee in order to have the parking spaces, or how you'll allocate them to tenants?
No, I really wouldn't. I think it, you know, to be honest with you, I own other property, and it's been my experience that usually the smaller units don't, you may have two that have parking and two that may not, and seeing that we're literally, the bus stop is right here, and then a couple of blocks down to the purple line, to the silver line, and then the blue, the blue bikes are literally right here. So I think it's actually a commuter's dream, to be, to be honest with you.
So essentially, tenants will get city parking stickers, and if they find a?
No, they're, no, my understanding is that they're not, but because we're out of the building by five, I don't think we're going to have an issue. And as a matter of fact, coming to this meeting today, I decided, I was like, you know, keeping an eye on the area for the parking, and so my thought is that once we're out of there, they're going to be able to, to park, and mostly everybody's working from home these days. So it's, it's different. It's a different time.
No, because one of, one of the things they're seeking is parking relief.
Correct.
Tenants are ineligible from participating in the permit program.
Yep, and we're well aware. And we, and I know it has to be part of the lease, so we have no problem with that.
I have one concern, and it's that last parking spot closest to, I forgot what street it is, Cary, Cary Ave. I pass there all the time. There's always, not always, let me not inflate it, but I usually see a car overhanging into the sidewalk, and that can be frustrating if you're a pedestrian.
Where? Here?
Yeah, that last one.
Okay. So that won't be the situation anymore because if, if the new parking plan, the proposal is their parking tandem. So.
Can you go back to that site plan, John, so we can look, so the, what you had highlighted were the edits? Is that what we're understanding?
Right, because this is, this is the current existing parking situation because there is no fence. But in the event that the fence does come up, then this is, so this is where you're mentioning parking number three, and that, in this case would go like this.
Okay, so we should disregard the lines as they're drawn?
Right, right. It's just that we couldn't, he added the parking spaces. It was very last minute from the last meeting, so we sort of kept the lines, existing lines.
I'm just concerned about circulation around the site. Like, how does the, how does parking spot number two get out? Do they back?
Just like, just like most of the properties on Washington Ave, they, they're all usually backing out into, into the street. So that's pretty much the whole area, just the way it's set up.
Okay, and then how do the tandem spots work?
I would put them on this side.
The ones on the north side of the building?
I would put them on this side here.
The ones that go broadside along the building? How do you get in and out of those?
Oh, sorry. So this is, this is Washington Ave here, and there's currently a gate here. So this obviously would be, the gate would be eliminated, and then they would pull into here. There's all this additional space, but I kept it like that just so that they can turn around if need be, so it makes it easier. This is actually very spacious here.
Yeah, what is the dimension?
I'm sorry?
What is the dimension of the aisle that gets past the cars that are parked?
I do not know. Sorry about that. I do not know the exact dimension, but I'm sure
we can get that. Are you proposing to put any fence in between the two property lines, or will that remain open until you have an agreement?
I am not, no. But if my neighbor puts it up, I want to be prepared.
Okay.
I am not, no.
Both, both Mr. Dupreeh and I noted that there was no mention in the Building Department's letter to you regarding a second means of egress from the apartments.
So there's the main entrance here to the building, and then the stairs, you can't see it in this site plan here, and you can see it in the, in the other rendering, but there's a second means of egress in the back of the building. There's actually two second means of egress.
What about from the units?
No, not from the units.
The units themselves, I thought, were required to have two means of egress.
Where is it on the back of the building?
Right here.
And are, are there stairs connected with that door?
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
Yes, and then, so you have the main entrance in the front, and then you have, this is the emergency exit in the back to the units.
Is that showing your floor plans?
Yes.
Looked, looked right over it. Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, there's only one stair, correct?
Yes, the main, so you walk.
So if you're on one of the upper stories, what is the second means?
So those are the same stairs that obviously lead up to the units, and then from there you would exit all the way out to the back.
Okay, and then how do you get down from the?
Through the stairs.
So there's only one, one flight of steps?
Correct.
So you're saying the back door and the front door constitute two means of egress?
I'm sorry?
I say you're, you're saying that, what you're saying is that the back door and the front door constitute two means of egress.
That is correct, yes.
But there's only one staircase?
Correct.
Okay. And the Building Department apparently has no problem with that.
That is my understanding. I am not.
Yep. Were questions? Do we have a motion?
I think we need more information on the site plan, how circulation is going to work, because there's no understanding of what your neighbor is going to do, and, you know, if they decide to put up a fence, then the whole deal is off. You know, these cars aren't going to be able to.
That was the reason the parking plan was redrawn to address that issue.
Right.
So that if they put up.
But there's no dimensions on there. I can't understand how a car is going to make that corner and still, I mean, a site plan with dimensions would be really helpful to have, especially with the edits that you noted, which don't reflect in the drawing itself. Yeah, I, I think I would, I agree. I would be more comfortable if we could get copies of the revised plans to examine, you know, that clearly indicate to scale all of the dimensions, you know, for, for the parking. I'm just, there were some other, I think there were some other things noted in, in Planning Department memo, you know, that none, none of the drawings we've received are to scale, which does make it difficult for us to review.
We did send later email with them, but we can definitely update. That's not an issue.
And I think that would, I mean, was there anything more that you would want to see? Yeah, there's a comment from the Department of Permitting and Land Use Planning that if there were to be a fence, there would only be three resulting legal parking spots.
Well, the tandem spaces would still require the special permit, that we know. So I don't think that was addressed in the original letter from the department.
Agreed. I was counting spaces parking, you know, nine by eighteen spaces, so I wasn't counting tandem spaces. So.
Which require a longer dimension.
Right, but they would also require a special permit relief.
Yeah, it's helpful if something like that is indicated on the plan so we can see the shape of the parking spaces and count them. It gets difficult to assess.
Totally get it. Absolutely.
So I guess, I mean, if you're amenable, I would make a motion that we continue to our June meeting pending receipt of revised plans as, as we've requested.
Okay.
Yeah, we were just discussing that because we're not coming back to the ZBA until July anyway.
That's right.
So to come back in June would be perfect, come back to the board.
So I will make that motion. Second?
Okay, second. Megan, seconded? Yeah, is that John? You, you?
I got it.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mimi and Alan are not coming. They are stuck at work.
Uh-oh.
You don't have enough members to open the hearing.
For the next one?
So you can't even continue it. I would suggest, David?
Aye.
David, we're talking about 51 Library?
I'm sorry.
We're talking about 51 Library. The other members are not going to make it, so you don't have a quorum to hear it. You're going back to the board in June, to the ZBA in June.
July.
No, 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 that one was, that one was Ju. Was it July? I can't remember. Oh, so that was July?
Just thinking of the dates. Did we already extend that one to July?
I don't, I don't think you did. I don't, I don't think you did.
Well, we're going to have the same problem in June as in the other cases, correct, with not enough ZBA members, so.
Correct.
Can I, can I speak with my clients and we'll come back in? Just to confirm, that's the way to go.
Yeah.
Is Mimi, is she still trying to make it here?
Say again?
Mimi's still trying to make it here.
I think Mimi is not coming. If I understood what you said. Mimi is not coming. You know, I got a subsequent, a subsequent email from Mimi and from Alan that they are stuck at work and won't be able to make it.
Apparently don't have a choice anyway.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, if there isn't a quorum, we have no choice, so we'll extend to June and July then.
And you provide a letter indicating that you waive the statutory timeframe?
Yes.
Okay.
I had already submitted one for June, but will you need another one for July?
No, because the board will act on it. The board will act on it in June. This board will make their recommendation in June.
Right.
Okay.
No, because this is the second time we're here before this board on this case.
Right.
But, okay, I'll bring a letter in this week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and the last case of the evening is twenty dash twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash ten at two hundred thirteen Everett Avenue, Verdant. Is present? Yes?
I'm sorry? No.
No.
No, this is the first time you're appearing before this board.
Does that mic at the table work?
It does.
If you, you know, if you want to sit down, feel free.
I'm happy to stand. I would prefer to stand.
Either way.
Okay, cool. Good evening, everyone. My name is Doug Medvitz. I'm here as one of the principals of Verdant. We're the company who is proposing the research and development lab space at two thirteen Everett Avenue. I have a part of our team here as well, so we're going to do this presentation in a couple of different tranches. I'm going to start with an introduction. Give you guys a little bit of background about the company, myself, my partners, and the project itself, and then we're going to have each individual, part of the, member of the team, present their portion. So John, if you don't, so that first, this is a rendering of what we believe the building will look like as currently proposed, so just for your own knowledge, this would be Everett Avenue here. You can see the gas station that is on the corner of Everett and Carter there, just so you have a little bit of reference. So if you can go to the next slide, please. One back. So again, this is just briefly, this is the Verdant team, this is the development team. Myself and Kadesia, we've been partners in development for about ten years. We've been doing a lot of residential development over in East Boston. And both Kadesia and I have PhDs in chemistry, so we've, we used to work at Harvard Medical for about eight years before we got into development, so we are, we have a some insight into the biology space and the research and development labs, so we're not just developers coming in and, you know, coming into Chelsea and just presenting a research and development lab. We've actually worked in them, so we we're trying to do it in a little more intelligent fashion. And then Greg Nolan is also a part of our team, and he's helping out with various parts of the development of this project, so you can go to the next slide, John. So, we didn't just pick this site because, you know, somebody offered it to us or we knew the Floramo family. We actually picked this site because we think it makes a lot of sense. Scientists inherently don't like to drive to work. They would prefer to use public transportation. And so, the biggest reason we chose this site is because of the proximity to transportation, so as all of you are aware, we're very close to the train station here. We're, we have a two-minute walk radius here outlined, just to give you an idea of sort of how close we are. Multiple bus lines that run up and down Everett Avenue. Obviously Route One runs along here for anybody who does need to drive from the suburbs. Additionally, we like the area because of all the apartments that are being developed across the street. I think that that's going to be a huge draw for employees working in the labs. Why not live in a brand-new apartment and walk to work? So I think that will also be interesting. And then, of course, we have the high school here, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And then the hotels that surround the building, so you're going to have people coming in and interviewing. You're going to have partners from out of state coming in to see what's going on in these labs. And so, you know, we think that having hotel rooms right within walking distance is also really attractive. And then we also, we did ask a bunch of our colleagues, you know, would you rent space in this building, and they absolutely would, so. A lot of reasons why this site makes sense for us. So you can go to the next one, John. So, the reason why we're here, obviously, is we do have variances and some special permit asks. Mainly height, FAR in the variance, and then the off-street parking for the special permit. And I'm going to talk a little bit about why we're asking for these things, and then I'll have the rest of the team talk about the building and some of the other things. So, John, if you could go to the next one? So, the reason why we're asking for the variances is there are some hardships here. The main one is the lot shape. It's very irregular. Makes it challenging to fit all of the zoning code precisely, especially the back part of the lot there. We're calling this a regular L shape, but back here, it's really hard to meet setbacks, right? And so, we want to maximize the lot, but when you start running into funky shapes, it makes it a little challenging, so it causes us to have issues with parking, and usually that causes the buildings to be a little bit taller. Next slide? We're also in a flood zone. The whole site, so this, it looks like it's blurry, but that's just the FEMA website. The only part of this area that's not in the flood zone is the elevated portion of Route One, so if you look on the right side of the screen there, that's Route One. This is, just for clarity's sake, this is Everett Avenue here. This is our site. So, that in and of itself requires us to raise the building some. We have to make sure that we've elevated the building so we don't run into any issues with construction in the flood zone. When do you get a chance? Just scroll through the next one? And then, sorry, one back. And then we also, there is contamination on this lot, so there's going to be some issues with the soil, which decreases our ability with some of our foundational options. And then also, we can't, because of the flood zone and because of the lot soil, we can't really build anything below grade, so just a lot of reasons why we're asking for the variances that we're asking for. Next slide? In terms of the parking, we are proposing less than what the zoning code requires. There are a couple of reasons for this. One of them is in a building like this, you're not going to have simultaneous use of the entire lab. And what I mean by that is, we have in blue labeled office space, and then in the yellow, and the yellows look about the same, and all the yellow is basically the lab space, so there's lab space and the lab support space. If an employee is working in the lab, they're not also going to be in the office. You don't have lab personnel and office personnel. They are either going to be in one space or the other. And so in a building like this, you're not going to have full occupancy at any time. You're pretty much going to have fifty percent occupancy of the building if everybody's there at one time, which again, scientists also don't work normal hours. They, sometimes they work ten to eight, sometimes they work nine to five, so you're going to have a lot of, I don't want to say empty space, but non-simultaneous use is the way that we're describing it, so there will never be a person in every single room at the same time. Go ahead, John. And then as I've already mentioned, we are very close to a lot of transportation, and we do truly believe that most of the people coming to this building are going to be taking either the the purple line or the silver line for that matter, because with the SL three going directly from South Station to the site, it really opens up a lot of travel for anybody who wants to live basically anywhere. If you can get to South Station, you can get to this site by bus. Again, as I mentioned before, we have the multiple bus lines, we do have Route One, and then we have the blue bike station not very far either, so there's a variety of transportation nodes that will allow for a decrease in parking for this building. Go ahead to the next one? Oh, and yeah, so I just, you can go through the next couple, but I listed some of these things. I'm not going to go into detail, but again, various bus routes, and then, as I mentioned before, the apartments across the street. I do believe that a decent portion of the people working here will find that attractive, and they will want to live that close to the building. Some of the additional points that I wanted to make before I pass it along to the rest of the group are we have already, we think, myself and my partner Kadesia, we have been scientists our whole life, and we think this is a huge opportunity because the high school is right across the street, that we can collaborate. We've had some preliminary conversations with Councilman Robinson and the Superintendent Albeda. We met last week, we talked, we have some really good ideas, nothing finalized yet because we don't know, you know, we want to make sure we have the building approved before we start committing anything. But we really think that there can be a huge collaboration between the high school and even the middle school, but because the high school is so close, we can utilize some of those. I also did a little bit of research with Bunker Hill Community College. I know they have a satellite campus close, and there's a lot of degrees that Bunker Hill offers that would sort of be a nice collaboration between this building, and, you know, there's some potential there to, you know, allow them to use some of the lab space, or even just communicate with scientists in the building. I think it's it's pretty much whatever people are willing to do. You know, scientists are very collaborative, and that's sort of what we want this to be, so, you know, there are those options as well. And then for the general community, there is going to be a restaurant on the first floor still. It may not be the same restaurant, it may be. There's no definitive answer there, but we will have some restaurant on the first floor that will be accessible to the building as well as to the to the general public. There will be a door from the Everett Ave side. And then we're also going to have a first-floor assembly conference room. And again, it's going to be available to the public. If the community, if this high school, if anybody in the community wants to rent that space out or book that space and have any kind of event in there, that will be available. And then, we've had some conversations with the high school about making, giving access to the parking garage. The parking garage is going to be private. There was some pushback. Originally, we were going to offer some public parking, but the, there was some pushback from the high school because of various reasons, so they would prefer that to stay private, but they would like to use it at certain times, which we could do. Next slide? And then here, here's just a an outline of sort of the project itself. I think it's important for everybody to just get a feel for how long this could be, you know, the sort of the timeline. So, again, we've already assembled the team, and we're currently in the, where I'm calling a choir zoning approval. We went to our first ZBA meeting a couple of weeks ago. We had to continue for obvious reasons, but, so we're in that stage right now. Once we get that approval, we're about nine to twelve months from getting our building permit, so once we get approvals from the ZBA as well as the planning board, we will have to go back and draw up our construction drawings so we can get our permit from the building department. And then, while we're doing the building permit, we will start pre-leasing this building. There's a huge demand for this space all around Massachusetts, so we will start pre-leasing it. We have a team, a couple of different brokerages who are going to help us with that, and they believe we could have the vast majority leased up before we even start building it. And then, once we get our building permit, our construction team, which we already have signed on with, it's a company called DPR, they're estimating about twenty-six months from the time we start to the time people can start moving into the building, so. So, you know, we're anywhere from two to three years away from today, from this building being ready to be occupied. Next slide? All right, so I'm going to turn it over to Rick Salvo. He's going to talk about the site plan and the civil plans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Rick Salvo with Engineering Alliance, office at one ninety-four Central Street in Saugus. John, can we go back one slide, just to the existing conditions, but I know everyone's very familiar with the site. The site fronts on both, give me that. Fronts both on Everett Avenue and Beach Street. There goes about a hundred and sixty-six feet of frontage on Everett Avenue. There's about sixty-six feet of frontage on Beach Street. This lot's just under an acre, about forty thousand, three hundred and some odd square feet. Obviously, it's occupied by the existing Florammo's Restaurant, and the site is entirely paved. Right now, access to the site is provided by one of two curb cuts on Everett Avenue. Again, this entire site is located within the Hundred Year Flood Plain, elevation ten, the elevation of the site is around elevation eight or nine, so it's, you know, sort of just into the flood plain. Relatively flat, you know, as everyone is aware. I'm sure most people have been to the site. If we could go to the next slide? So, my presentation is going to be pretty brief. As you can see, there really isn't much to talk about the site because the majority of the site is occupied by the buildings. Nonetheless, this curb cut will be closed. This existing curb cut will be retained. This will be the main vehicular access into the site. This will be the main pedestrian access into the building. There will be a proposed curb cut on Beach Street to access the loading areas in the rear. Trash and utilities will be serviced in this area here also through the existing curb cut. Because this is a sort of a zero-lot-line building, we'll be replacing the sidewalks along Everett Avenue and along Beach Street. We've summarized in the land usage table the relief that we're requiring. Most of it is dimensional relief, as was discussed. Setbacks, FAR, height, and that sort of thing. So, that's basically the way the site lays out, the access to the site lays out. So I think now we'll switch over to traffic, and I'll be available at the end to answer any questions that you might have.
Excellent. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk. I'm the managing partner with Vanessa Associates, and we're the transportation consultants in the project. Next slide, John, please. Thank you. So there's a full transportation impact assessment that was prepared for the project. It does follow MassDOT guidelines, and we also work with city staff to understand development projects in the area, road improvements, and other things to be incorporated within our analysis itself. One of the things I'd like to mention is we're talking about traffic studies or transportation studies conducted during the pandemic, is that there is methodology and appropriateness for adjusting the traffic volumes, and the way that we adjust our traffic volumes is we look backwards to see hopefully we'll be going forward, so we look back at historic traffic counts. MassDOT considers twenty nineteen to be existing conditions, so as we're looking at conditions in twenty twenty-two, what they ask us to do is look at how the traffic volumes, trip patterns were in twenty nineteen, and if we conduct new counts, which we've done as a part of this assessment, we need to adjust the volumes so that they're at least equal to what conditions would have been in twenty nineteen before the pandemic had happened. So that's what's been done as a part of this assessment. As we compare twenty twenty-two volumes in this area to twenty nineteen, traffic volumes are off, lower by about eighteen percent. So all of the traffic numbers have been adjusted upwards by about eighteen percent to reflect conditions had they not happened, or the COVID pandemic not happened, so that's standard protocol that MassDOT has established for conducting traffic studies. In terms of looking at the impacts of the project, we've basically provided a broad overview to say it's not going to result in significant impact in terms of increases in delays in vehicle queuing over existing conditions. And I think that's a very significant caveat over existing conditions, because it doesn't mean it's free-flowing traffic in the area. We know that there's a number of intersections that are, have movements that are at or over capacity, so we've structured some improvements to try to deal with those existing conditions. There were two locations where we had identified as high-crash locations, and the intersections of Everett Avenue or Carter Street and Everett Avenue at Spruce Street. Both are either high-crash locations or on a state-designated list as high-crash locations. The other important thing to mention, you know, as you heard mentioned from Doug at the outset, I mean, this is a a project that we want to encourage use of public transportation. So walking, biking, and things are important, but this area, Everett Avenue and Spruce Street are both high pedestrian crash locations as well. So we're, as we're looking at improvements, we're trying to address those so that this can become walkable, bikable, and accessible by public transportation. And then lastly, we did look at the driveways to make sure that we have sufficient line of sight to be able to safely enter and exit the site. And next slide, John? So this slide just shows the context of the project in relation to the transportation infrastructure, and I think the important thing to point out is, whoop, it's not going to work on this slide here, it's just the Chelsea Silverline Station, which is within a three-minute walking distance of the project site. There's also bus lines, MBTA Bus Service, the one twelve and the one fourteen bus traveled down Everett Avenue and Spruce Street. The closest bus stop was within about a one-minute walking distance of the site. Next slide, John? This slide shows the existing conditions in the area. What you see in terms of where you see the orange dash lines, that's where there are sidewalks. So you can see there's generally sidewalks along both sides of the majority of the roadways. Where we're showing blue lines, that's where there are crosswalks, so the signalized intersections at both Carter and Spruce have crosswalks with push buttons, so they're fully- at both Carter and Spruce have crosswalks with push buttons, so they're fully accessible in terms of being able to cross. And then the the city has invested in bike accommodations in the area, so we have bike lanes along Everett Street as well Everett Avenue as well as along Carter Street. So again, it brings us to proximity to public transportation, it's walkable, it's bikeable in the area, and we do know that the city has plans for improvements along Spruce Street as well, so we envision those bike accommodations would also come along Spruce Street. So there is existing infrastructure, but there's also future infrastructure that we can take advantage of. Next slide, John. So this slide shows the traffic characteristics of the project, and it's combined in terms of the restaurant space that was mentioned, as well as a laboratory space. We've shown automobile trips, transit trips, and pedestrian and bicycle trips. This area in general, about 60% of the residents in this area use public transportation. We've actually flipped those numbers and have said 60% will be automobile trips, about 30, 35% will be transit trips, and then we'll have somewhere between 5 and 10% of pedestrian and bicycle trips. What that does is, we probably have unrealistically high traffic volumes, but we want to do that to be prudent in terms of looking at improvements in the area, so re-timing of traffic signals, specific roadway improvements. So we've used the higher numbers related to automobile trips, although we do not expect that we're going to achieve this level of automobile traffic. So we're predicting 215 automobile trips in the morning peak hour, 240 in the evening peak hour. Most of the traffic in the morning would be coming in, it's 181, most of it would be going out in the evening, that's 189 vehicle trips. The larger number that you see at the top of the table, that's the daily number over the operational day of the facility. Next slide, John. So what's important is we look at those numbers of the 200 some odd vehicle trips that we're talking about, again, we think that's conservative on the high side, is the dispersal of traffic. So this slide here shows how the trips will arrive and depart from the project site, and I think the important thing to look at it is, it's very dispersed. So you only have concentrated traffic right at the project site, and then as you get further away from the site, the numbers get smaller and smaller as people are arriving from the various roadways and intersections within the study area. So again, you don't see concentration at any one intersection, you do see about 40% of the traffic is expected to be oriented to and from Route 1, and then would travel to the project site. Next slide, John. Thank you. So as we've assessed the impacts of the project, we've developed a series of recommendations. The first set of recommendations deal with the access into the project site, so there's pretty standard things that you'd expect to see. The driveways, we've recommended to be 24 feet in width, that I would vision that as being maximum. Generally, you, as you probably imagine, you want as narrow a curb cut as possible to reduce the exposure of pedestrians and bicycles as they're going by the driveway. So I would I would suggest 24 feet will be the maximum that we'd want to have at the site. To the extent that the garage has any access control features, you want this or a gate or a garage door, you want them set far enough back so that the vehicle doesn't stick out into the sidewalk as it's waiting for the the mechanism to operate. So that dimension is, from the face of the garage door to the back of the sidewalk should be at least 21 feet, that way you don't have the rear end of the vehicle hanging out. 23 feet is a minimum drive aisle width within the parking garage, that allows for vehicles to enter and exit parking spaces. The other recommendations are just standard things you'd expect, standardization of signs, making sure we have ADA compliance, and then making sure we have good sightlines for the driveways, but to make sure that we don't place anything in those driveways, including snow that would obscure sightlines. Next slide, John. Terms of the off-site improvements, the intersection of Everett Avenue and Carter Street, that was where we showed that signalized intersection had the most significant delays with or without the project. So we've recommended that as a part of this project, we would implement an optimal traffic signal timing and phasing plan. So what we're doing there is is making sure that the intersection is operating at its highest efficiency. With that optimal timing and phasing plan, what we're attempting to do is create a no-harm condition so that we offset the impact of the project. But we're also cognizant of making sure that there's sufficient time for pedestrians to cross each of the crosswalks at the intersection, and that there's passage time for bicycles as well. That's an important part of that signal phasing at the intersection. The Everett Avenue at Spruce Street, that intersection, as I noted, is a high-crash location. The Carter Street intersection has had a road safety audit done at that location, and the city has implemented improvements at that location. The same is can't be said for the Spruce Street intersection, so we're going to implement or facilitate the road safety audit there, which will define specific safety improvements. As a result of that, those safety improvements will be broken up into the short-term improvements, these are really the quick-hitting things that you've been done to immediately address safety. We've committed to designing and constructing each of the short-term improvements at that intersection so that it'll have a an immediate benefit in terms of operations. I had mentioned that the city is also has plans of redesigning Spruce Street, so that's a that'll kind of build upon the improvements that we're going to do in that at that intersection. And then lastly, developing an optimal timing and phasing plan for that signal as well. Next slide, John, please. Lastly, is a TDM program, so Transportation Advantage Program. These are specific measures that we will implement as a part of the project, and they're all designed to encourage use of public transportation. So for making sure that we have a transportation facilitator, that will be the goal between between the city, the employees, and any of the the transit agencies that are in the area. They will facilitate a ride-matching program, so essentially carpooling for the employees. So as a new employee, you put your name on a list, if you want a carpool, you say where you live, and then the transportation coordinator will match up to encourage carpooling to the project site, providing information about what's available in terms of public transportation services in the area, providing specific amenities within the project site. The restaurant is an amenity because you can go downstairs and get a meal, lunch, dinner, whatever it happens to be, but there's other things within the project site, direct deposit of paychecks, providing a break room. We do have pedestrian accommodations within the project sites, so as you look at the design of the project, it does embrace connectivity to the sidewalk infrastructure. We are providing both secure interior bicycle parking as well as exterior bicycle parking, which we'll work on with the city. The last thing is a transit screen that you might be familiar with, so in the lobby of the building is actually a just it's television screen. That television screen, you subscribe to a service, and the transit screen service, and what that does is it tells you when the next Silverline train is coming, when the next bus is coming. The idea of that is basically if it's snowing or raining, you can sit in the lobby, look at the transit screen and know, okay, I need three minutes to walk to the Silverline in climate weather, I'm going to time my departure so that I can meet up with the bus or meet up with the Silverline service. So that's something that will be installed in lobby. I think that's the last slide I have, John. Thank you very much, I'll turn it back over to the project team.
My name is Matthew Jurus, I'm a founder and principal of Fishbrook Design Studio, we're architects in Haverhill. Chairman Willis and members of the board, thanks for your time this this afternoon, this evening. So we'll take a minute to go through the the concept of the building, it's early days, if we can skip to the next slide, and talk about what we're proposing and how it's coming together. The team that that was doing the design and construction is our firm, Fishbrook Design, the architects of record, we're doing the shell and core. We've gathered around as a team with considerable expertise in the research and development in biospheres, CI design is our lab consultant, BR plus A in Hayes and O'Neil have a long history in in this sector of successful projects. EPM is our code consultant who helps wrangle the pretty considerable requirements of how to handle the different compounds and so forth that are used in the building. As Doug mentioned, DPR is our construction partner, and again, this is another a company that has a long history doing research and development in bio lab. Work on Lincoln Properties is is our leasing agent that are helping us sort of, you know, work our way through the the vagaries of of the the leasing market in in eastern Massachusetts. Next slide. Thanks. So by the numbers, the 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 building is is going to be LEED certified, it's about 390,000 square feet total, 286 square feet of leasable space, it will, we're proposing 11 stories, the conceptual conceptual construction cost provided by DPR is $267 million. Buildings of this sort, we expect to be between $600 and $700 per square feet, and our control estimate for the concept phase has can't come in right sort of on on the money, so we're very pleased for for that in these early days. The planning duration for the design and development of the project will be about 12 months, and again, construction is about 26 months. Next slide. We're in in Chelsea for a reason, and we can go to the next slide, too. This is, you know, it's culturally diverse and economically vibrant, and it's transportation-rich, and and, you know, there's 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 no secret to that. I like to point out this map shows the Kendall Square area in Cambridge, which is sort of the sizzly hot R and D area in the northeast, and our density of transportation options is is significantly greater than than theirs, and, you know, really, we've got sort of a magic confluence of 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 those those amenities. So next slide. And and we've seen this slide several times, so I won't linger too much on the transportation or other building amenities, but to say that our site is in an interesting location in the the sort of context of Chelsea. What we see is is that it's it's really sort of on a a seam between the the denser, more hilly and traditionally residential Addison and Orange neighborhoods, and it's really sort of on the edge of of that area and that type of topography with the West, the Broadway West neighborhood, which has been is for the last 250 years, a really interesting urban industrial area. It's it's really driven the economy of of Chelsea, it's undergone pretty dramatic transformations, and it's undergoing yet another transformation, and we'd we'd like to to continue seeding that. And so we are in a place where we have two different types of density, two different types of context, and so we're we're looking at the existing context that's a little bit more spread out and flatter in in the Broadway West area, and we're also looking ahead to the type of industry that that's, you know, emerging, and looking to sort of take part in in both of those phenomenon. I think we can go on to the next slide. So looking again at at the site and and three dimensions, you know, it's really, along this stretch of Route 1, there is a pretty significant sort of Chelsea identifier in in this area, that the FBI building is is sort of new and iconic, that the high school has always been sort of an icon for me, and we've we've got really sort of a vibrant, growing area here, and our our building is going to sort of nestle right into to that area. If we can go to the next. The slide illustrates just how, either one is fine, is how awkward this site, the shape of the site is, which, you know, buildings like to be rectangles, it's just sort of the most efficient way to do do buildings, and what we've got is sort of an oblong, oblong kind of fat, square-ish building with some angles in, and so it's it's difficult to build efficiently here, so that and also the the parking garage is is difficult to sort of lay out given this type of geometry. So it's just, this is where we are, what we're dealing with, and so it's it's important to sort of understand how it how it looks. This, I want to introduce in this slide also, our intention, since that the site is currently completely paved, and we're not going to have the options to to do any sort of softscape with with our proposal, we propose to plant along Everett Ave, and and what we would like to do is plant a series of street trees and planters along the the street, and do a branded planting at the the T-stop train station just up the the road on Everett Ave. In that way, what we'll we'll do is sort of create green space from those public transportation nodes, really right down to the intersection in the high school, past our building, and sort of reclaim some green space in that way, and we can go to the next one. In in plan, you see that laid out here, a sort of a hook of green, that's our intention for the privilege of building on this site. The we we see here is our floor plan superimposed on the site, and the the main occupant entry is is on Everett Ave, the restaurant enters from there as well. We have one, two, three loading docks and utility areas off of Beach Street, we have another utility area off of Everett Ave where trash is removed, and then parking enters on Everett Ave as well. We can go to the next. Back one. Thanks. And so because of the 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 configuration of the building, where our parking deck needs to go to the edge of the property line, the building needs to set back from that edge of property line so that we can have windows, otherwise we would have a need to have a fire-rated wall that would have very limited openings or no openings. And so that gives us the opportunity to have a walking terrace in the transition between the the parking deck and the the occupied floors above, and so what we intend to do is to to plant along the perimeter of that parking deck as well. And we'll look at the exterior sort of concept of how we intend to clad the building as we're getting into this initially, and the idea is with a repetitive set of plantings like this, we would pick up on what what we're imagining at at this stage, a series of vertical elements on the exterior of the building, so that the the plantings not only provide additional green space and return oxygen to the the atmosphere and so forth, but they they work with the design of the building. We can go to the next.
So it's basically the second floor?
Well, it it turns out to be, parking decks are kind of a different floor-to-floor height than than the rest of them, this is the fifth floor, by the numbers. Taking a look at the building from from Everett Ave, and again, very early days, we call this concept design, where we've we've gone through and and addressed the site constraints and the programmatic needs of the building, and put together basically a space diagram that works financially and works with the site constraints. How we developed that is is really a process that we're involved in at the moment, and, you know, so we've we've established sort of a a series of of themes that we're working with and will will continue developing. The the building is a speculative research and development building, okay, so it's not being built for a company, it's being built to attract companies. There's three different sizes of of spaces available, large, medium, and small, you can rent very small increments of of research space and and attending office space for one or two persons who are just, you know, startups with seed money. As their ideas grow and their funding grows, they may need 2,000 to 10,000 square feet, we've got a a middle-range option that serves tenants of that sort, and we also feel like there's a a strong market for 30,000-square-foot, single-floor tenants as well. Be a series of of different types of amenities that are available to the the occupants, and Doug and Jeff and and Rick have also described that some of the other public amenities that are going to be available to conference center, restaurant on the ground floor, and the community initiatives that that we're, you know, we consider these a serious opportunity to to sort of lace into the fabric of of this facility, a collaborative atmosphere that works both for scientists and students across the way. The architectural design has a series of themes that we're we're working with now, and as I said earlier, that the the exterior cladding is is by and large going to be a very simple, vertical set of elements with a a simple cladding on on behind the vertical solar shading elements. The parking decks are raised up above the ground floor, so ground floor is occupied by humans, and second, third, and fourth levels with a shorter floor-to-floor height are occupied by vehicles, and it sort of creates what we call a tutu around the middle of the building, that that's kind of wider than the rest. And you see the the rest of the building is set back from that that tutu. At the, let's see, it's southwest corner of the building facing back towards the skyline of Boston, we're creating an element that we're calling a beacon, which is going to be all glass, which will have primarily office space in it, and above an outdoor deck and an enclosed area that that could be planted, it could have other amenities like a climbing wall and and things of that nature, up at the top of the building. And this is sort of the intended to be the iconic element of the building that really identifies the building. And, you know, just below that is the the main entry of the building, and again, this is going to be sort of iconic on the street as well. We can, let's see, let's let's flip through another couple of of slides, and then I'll wrap it up in the interest of of time. And so we we see from from Route 1 that the the building is like like the FBI building just by its sheer mass in in these early days of of how it's going to be clad, is going to sort of take its place as a gateway icon in in Chelsea. If we can go to the next. We started off the building design with kind of a standard 17-foot floor-to-floor height, which is what's required, and there's no other factors being accounted for, for the the very significant mechanical systems and ventilation systems that research and development facilities require. And the the building got significantly tall, and so what we were able to do was work with our mechanical engineers and crush down the floor-to-floor height so that we've got, in the 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 parking garage, it's going to be a 10-foot floor-to-floor, and in the the research and development and office floors, it's a 15-foot floor-to-floor. And what we've been able to do is get the amount of leasable area that we need to to make the project feasible into a building that gauges itself the project feasible into a building that gauges itself by the parapet height of the FBI building. And so, really, what we're able to do is offer a pair of buildings that sort of create this iconic gateway. We can go ahead and take a look at the next.
Can you describe that, the height difference between the two buildings?
Sure. Yeah, and so, I think the FBI building is at its parapet 150 feet tall, and ours is 153 foot six.
Okay, and then there's some additional mechanical space.
Right, so, mechanical space on both buildings is accounted for separately than the building height, quote-unquote. Right. And so, you know, their mechanical space projects up above that parapet, as does ours. But, you know, the bulk of the building, we really are working hard to gauge it to the existing building adjacent. The last piece that I want to point out is that, you know, that the site is a unique-shaped site with some funky challenges as a result. But what it does is, in this sort of, below the beacon element, in the main front entry, the building kind of leans in towards the street. And we're taking advantage of that in order to create an entryway. We've got a walking deck up here, as we talked about, which will be planted at the edge. And this is sort of another, it's like a signboard, it's like an iconic element of the building. And what we intend to do is commission a bar relief or a low relief that would be figurative and have themes that would tie science, biology, and the sort of the geometric elements of the periodic table and so forth, that have sort of identifiable graphic quality. And the history of Chelsea as a spot of innovation, I mean, think the Lassiter Foundation and so forth. And, you know, like Diego Rivera did with murals that he was commissioned to do on the side of buildings, this would be a way of sort of tying into the stones of the building in the place where the majority of people enter and exit. The enterprise of this building is purpose-built for and the location that it's built in. So, I'll leave it at that, and we're happy to answer questions.
I have a question about engagement with the high school and the community engagement. If your company is basically, I don't know, the landlord, and the actual biotech companies will be leasing from you, then how are you actually going to be able to manage community engagement?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. It came up a couple of times. So, as I mentioned, I was a scientist for a long time, scientist. We all know that there's a lack of sort of, I don't want to say lack of education, but a lack of, a lack of connectiveness between what's available to scientists and what they're actually sort of learning in the classroom. And by that, I mean what opportunities they have. I've talked to numerous educators, they don't even know that these sort of biology-based companies exist. So, in general, scientists want to collaborate with people who are interested in being scientists. And they would, when I was in the lab, we always had undergrads, we always had whoever. We worked with, when I was at Harvard Medical, we would work with Northeastern, we had co-op programs. So, it's sort of inherent in scientists to sort of mentor the next stage of scientists. So, that's one. The second thing that we've been talking about, and again, these are just conversations, but when we were talking with the superintendent last week, one of the things that I would really like to do is work with some local companies and create a room in the building that's specific for Chelsea, so that it doesn't matter whether or not any of these companies decide they want to work with them. I believe that they will, but we want to have a room that's sort of almost like the high school kids can come over at any time, and they can do experiments, and they can do things that way, and actually learn, sort of hands-on learning, as opposed to just reading it in a book. The superintendent told us her daughter is a scientist, and her biggest issue with going to class was, well, all I'm doing is reading about what a microscope is, and I take a test and I write down what it is, I'd like to use one. So, that's something that we would really like to do, is just sort of create some space, probably on the first floor, to make it easily accessible to the local community and just strictly for them, so that we don't run into exactly what you're bringing up.
Okay, that sounds promising. And what about in terms of like hiring Chelsea first? You mentioned that as well. If you're the landlord, then what's, like, how would you make that happen for these companies?
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, we can't tell the specific companies who rent from us that they, who they have to hire. We do want to sort of bring that collaboration with the local community. I think if, you know, if these students who are, you know, learning next door come over and have these conversations, and they have a mentorship or an internship with these companies, it will give them a very good sort of leg up to just sort of continuing in with the company. There are also non-science jobs in this building, right? There are various types of jobs. There's going to be, I don't know if it's going to be 24-hour security, but it's going to be probably at least 12-hour security jobs. There's going to be things like that. There's building management, right? So, there's going to be probably a 24-hour super on this site, because it's such a large building, you know, even though it's brand-new, there are going to be things that need change, right? So, and then, there's obviously the restaurant. There's so many different types of professions that will come along with this building. Obviously, we focused on the science part of this building tonight, but we didn't talk a ton about that. But there is a huge draw of different types of jobs, and those will be available, I mean, again, as the management company would, will be offering that to anybody. And so, I think that's where you can bring in both science and non-science jobs.
So, the management company is verdant?
So, we're the, we're going to be the owner developer. We will hire in, so, the company that we showed on here, Lincoln Property Company, they are a leasing and management company. So, a building of this size, you're going to need a professional management company, right? I don't manage buildings this size. What we do is identify the locations, we build them, and then, we stay on its ownership, but we hire in companies to manage it efficiently. So, but they will be, they will need to hire somebody to run the building on a daily basis as well.
Yeah, it's just a little hard for me to imagine exactly, I mean, whoever is, I think, is it probably the management company that's going to be doing a lot of this, this community engagement and everything?
No, I think, I think the management company will be there to run the day-to-day. I think, as a, this is one of the reasons why I'm moving into this industry. I think there is a sort of a disconnect between ownership and development and the science community. And so, it's not just, I'm a developer and I want to do this. My partner, Kadeja and I, we've been having this conversation with a lot of our colleagues in the science world for some time now, and that's one of the biggest disconnects, is developers are coming in, but they don't understand what the science community really wants. So, we will stay involved, right?
That was the question.
Yeah, yeah, it's not going to be like, oh, we hire this management company, and they get to do whatever they want. They're just going to be there because they know how to manage a 350,000-square-foot building, and if the HVAC system goes down, they have the right people to do that. But in terms of the things that we talk about here, and we commit to, to the city of Chelsea, those are the things that Kadeja and myself will stay involved in.
And where are you based out of?
What's that?
Where are you based?
I live in South Boston right now, yeah. And so, we've been, like I said earlier, we've been doing a lot of work in East Boston, right across the McCardle Bridge there, so we're, you know, really close to Chelsea. And we've, we've been interested in getting into Chelsea for a while, but this one made the most sense for us.
Where is your business located?
The business is located in South Boston.
It's a gorgeous building.
Thank you.
Nicely designed.
Yeah.
My biggest concern is traffic.
Sure.
Especially around Spruce Street and how, as ridership increases over time with public transportation, you know, I'm sure the city of Chelsea has looked at this in a broader view, but it's, it's a big, it's already clogged up right at that intersection of Everett and Spruce. So, that's, I would think that we're going to need to look into multiple ways to alleviate that, and maybe some pedestrian connections or van pools, you know, discouraging, or perhaps not granting parking spaces to new tenants in the neighborhood. We need to look at all of those options, because it's a giant problem, even though we want to see public transportation increase, but it's, it's just, you know, it creates a big problem for those trying to get on the Tobin Bridge. The other, okay, the other question I had was how site drainage is going to be handled?
So, right now, we have a site that's 100% paved. It's open to the sky, it's sanded, it's salted, we're getting total suspended solids and all sorts of things that are heading into the municipal drainage system. By building a building on it, now, what water is it that's going to drain into the drainage system? It's going to be roof runoff that doesn't get contaminated or mixed up with those different things. There are some opportunities around the site to provide infiltration, which we will be putting in some infiltration systems, and then, from there, will overflow back into, back into the municipal drainage system. So, there's an opportunity for us to remove flow from the drainage system. More importantly, just put clean effluent back into the drainage system, not stuff that's contaminated with sand, salts, and the like.
Okay, so, you're proposing to treat it on-site?
Yes.
Okay. What are some of the other LEED features that you have in mind?
There's sort of, it's a long list that go into this recipe for LEED certification. So, we're going to take as much advantage of roof for photovoltaic solar panels as we can. The transportation piece is big. We have sun control or solar devices that are going to help take the burden off the mechanical systems. It's an all-electric building, I'm from the top of my head here. The sort of low-hanging fruit that's going to show up on the list as we started off is, and see, let's, what else? I mean, it goes on from there. We've got bicycle facilities and...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have serious concerns, reservations about the scale of this building, and that there is absolutely no setback. That is a heavily trafficked area, not just automobiles, but pedestrians. And this building is so ridiculously outsized for the neighborhood. I mean, it might be, you know, comparable in height to the FBI, but the FBI has a lot of setbacks. I also, I mean, think 11 stories, you know, that's, that's just too tall. You know, arguments about the awkwardness of the plot, of the plat, that, I mean, you know that going in. You know what the plat looks like, you know what the city's building codes and ordinances are, and yet, you are seeking relief from every single one. I, we've had other applications doing the same thing. I find that arrogant. I find, you know, somebody coming in for a project such as this, seeking relief from every single building code and ordinance that the city has, is arrogant. You know, it's up to you to figure out how to best comply with the existing codes and ordinances. And that the property, you know, that the layout of the property makes that difficult, I just don't think that excuses seeking relief from everything, when it's, I mean, we're not talking, you know, little, you know, tiny little differences between your plan and the code. They are significant.
Sure. No, your concerns are understandable. I won't stand here and say that that's not an unreasonable thought.
So, why not scale it back?
Well, for a couple of reasons. One, the cost of construction is substantial, right? Just bear with me for a second. The cost of construction is substantial. We've had these conversations with our construction team, we've had many conversations with this whole team here, about exactly what you're talking about. And one of our initial thoughts was to, you know, go underground with parking, but because of the things that we talked about, the flood zone, the soil issues, it's just not feasible for us to take that parking underground. And we want to make sure that we are proposing a building that, if we, that can be built, right, because of the cost, and that allows us to create the parking that is going to be necessary. Like, yes, we've talked a lot about transportation here tonight, and the transportation nodes that are within this, the radius of this building. I would love to propose a building that has no parking deck. But we, nobody standing here or sitting here can even say that that's feasible, right? Because as much as I can stand here and say, scientists would prefer not to drive, there are people that are going to live in the North Shore, the South Shore, the western part of the state, who are going to work in this building. And not everybody's going to want to live at the Vero Apartments. So, my best answer to you is, this is what allows us to make the building work, as well as the community involvement that we think is important. There are things that we want to allow the community to use at zero cost to the community. One of the other things that I did not mention is our construction partner, DPR. They have a, an internship program that any high school student that would want to be involved with them could, from the start of the construction of this project, all the way through the end, can be part of that. So, I think that, although I hear what you're saying, I think we have thought this through the best that we can, and we are proposing the building that makes sense from a variety of perspectives. And that's, that's the best answer that I can give you to that concern.
So, basically, what you're saying is, if we do not grant the variances and the special permits, if we don't recommend to the ZBA that all of these variances and special permits be given, the building doesn't get built at all?
Well, I think it makes it more challenging. I think, I think the building can still be built, but there will be, there will have to be some give and take, right? We can't just start cutting off the floors off the top of this building, because that's where the companies are going to be, right? That's where the revenue-generating space is going to come from. The parking structure is just going to be built. That's a cost to the development team that you don't really get to create revenue from. Yes, companies are going to want to park there, but we're not going to be charging them for that. So, if we start bringing the building down, it's going to affect multiple aspects of this building, right? It may shrink the size of the restaurant. It may cause us to remove the community assembly space on the first floor, because we need to put some lab space on the first floor, instead of putting it upstairs. So, we tried to really think about providing what we believe is very beneficial to the surrounding community, and that's why we proposed the amount of parking and the amount of lab space. But if we start cutting floors off the top, that's where all the lab space is, right? So, that, there's going to have to be, like I said, a little bit of give and take if we start doing those, and so...
Yeah, because from where I'm sitting, you need to scale it back.
Okay.
You need to reduce the number of floors, and you need to provide setbacks.
Okay.
Surrounding the building, at least on, you know, along the street sides, there needs, there must be setbacks.
And...
Because you're talking about, I mean, that is a heavily walked area.
Sure.
From the neighborhoods to the high school, to the grocery stores.
Okay.
I just, you know, there, it's got to be smaller.
Okay. And, and again, I hear everything you're saying, and I just want to add a couple of other things. You know, we've had multiple conversations with the fire department and talked about setbacks and things like that, and, you know, according to the conversations our design team has had with them, this is something that they are okay with as well.
As a pedestrian, I don't drive, okay? I walk all over the city, and as a pedestrian, I require setbacks. There's, there are some buildings in the general area that, Baldor on Second Street, their extension is right on top of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
As a pedestrian, I find that dangerous.
Okay.
You know, what the fire department says, you know, in the actual experience
Sure, sure.
of the people in the neighborhood is, can be very different.
Yeah.
And I'm just, I...
So, our, so, and again, I'm listening, and we want to work with the city. Like, we've, before we submitted this application, we sat down with many people in different roles in the city and had these conversations and had a lot of... and had these conversations and had a lot of back and forth. This wasn't something we just slapped in an application and got in front of you. So, we, we are happy to have these conversations. We are happy to work with, with the city as much as we possibly can. My, my pushback to you would be then, if, if, if that's a consensus, right? If that's something that we have to seriously consider, then I would ask then, what of some of the, the, the community outreach that we're offering are things that aren't as exciting for you, right? Because again, we proposed a building like this because we think there are things from our perspective that are really exciting for the community. But that could, we could be wrong. Like, we could be wrong in some of the things that we're proposing here. And so, that would be something we would have to discuss, right? We would have to discuss what you would be willing to give up if we gave up something, right? Because we, and I'm not saying that to be difficult. I'm saying there are things that would have to be discussed if we went that route.
From my perspective, the exciting things about community engagement are things that you can't really decide yet. They're very much in the future. Like, for me, the space isn't that important. You've got the, the Chelsea High School auditorium. What matters is the opportunities
Sure.
that are provided to individuals. And you can't really promise those right now.
Well, I, I think we can. I think we can, we can create space specifically for the community. I think that that's something we can absolutely do. Again, at the end of the day, we all work at specific companies, right? And, and I can't go to your company and tell them they have to do something. But what I can tell you is if you talk to scientists, right? I'm one of them, there are others in this room. This will happen. But you're right, I can't go to these companies as they come into this building and say, "You have to do this," right? They're private companies.
I understand. I'm, I'm going to be defending my dissertation this summer.
Yeah, yeah, so, but...
And I also know I'm, I'm going to get my PhD in social work and how hard community-based research is and how it really takes commitment.
Sure.
It takes being somewhere for a long time and really investing in order to build those partnerships. It's something that sounds good to a lot of people, but it's much easier said than done. And I'm really excited about the potential, but it's going to take investment.
Yeah, and that's, and, and that's one of the reasons we started having these conversations. We, we've had a few meetings with Leo, Councilman Robinson. And again, we, we've already met with the superintendent. We, we've taken these steps already because we understand what you're talking about. We know that it's not just, hey, this building gets approved and everything's going to be great, right? We, we have to be able to find out what the, the community really needs. Because again, what I think the scientists need could be completely different from what the superintendent or anybody in this room thinks. So, I, I, I'm with you on this, and I think it is a, a communication that needs to, to continue. But I think it can be done. I, I think, I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm the type of person who thinks if we just talk about it and we have these conversations, we can, we can make things happen. I mean, it's, that's fine. But we have to be willing to have those conversations. And that's sort of what I'm, we're here for. We, we want to, to be involved in the community. It's not, we're, we're not here just to talk about this. I think it's important. I, you know, one of the things I even talked to the superintendent about was, you know, sitting down with the science teachers and talking about how education, how, I would like to have been educated as a, as a science student. So, I think it's more than just what the building can offer. There are other things that I think our team can offer to the community as well. So, that's how we look at it. Yeah, of course.
Just to shed a little bit of light on, on how we got to zero lot line and where some of that came from. We can sort of talk that through. And also, you know, the, the time to talk about commitments to, to community interface is, is now. We have to start those, those intentions now in order to follow through. And, and so, you know, we, how, how we're sort of bound to these conversations at the end is a matter that we all need to, to sort of work through the process. But we're committed to it, we're stating it, and we want to be on the record as, as, as having these intentions. If, if we could go back one slide. And, and, you know, I just want to say there, there's a, there's a 10-foot sidewalk between the curb and, and the face of the building that, that's going to be continuous, you know, across, all up and down Everett Avenue and in front of our building as well. And so, you know, we, we've got the, the hotel next door that, that's really sort of tall and stark and, and, you know, an uncomfortable pedestrian experience for, for me, anyway. We currently walk across a, a parking lot or walk in front of a parking lot with cars coming and going and, and a building setback, and you sort of look across a sea of, of cars and, and proceed on to a gas station. And so, that's currently what we're, we're working with as, as context. And, you know, what we're seeing as a streetscape here is much more vibrant with a, a much less sort of negative impact in the building next to it, that, that's lively and engaging and additive to the street life and, and, you know, considerably safer feeling and safer in reality than the, the current situation. The, the way we got to, to the zero setbacks is basically being able to create drive aisles and, and turning aisles in the parking, in, in the parking garage. Initially, our, our first passes were to take that parking garage and, and make it subsurface. And that, that's, you know, sort of the obvious best-case scenario. And, and it won't work unless we go lot line to lot line.
Have you looked at...
Sorry?
Have you looked at a parking lift or some other consolidated way to, you know, reach your parking numbers? But...
We, we...
You know, eliminate collisions onsite by, you know, having them...
And, yeah, th- this is an option that, that's live in, in our conversations. What we found is, is that in terms of the, the circulation space and, and the, the turning radius and the, the travel zones that you need to get to those devices, you, you still have space problems. And the, the geometry of the site and the size of the site remains constraining. And the other thing is those, for the cost, those systems don't reduce the amount of, you know, don't, don't vastly increase the amount of cars that you can pack into an, an area. So, tha- that's a solution we would love to make work. And, you know, but I, I can't say that we, we see that right now. But, but it, you know, we came to this with, with, you know, a deliberate approach. This was not our first choice to, to put a parking garage above the ground floor and have it go lot line to lot line at all. It's actually, it's, it's quite a, a challenge design-wise to, to work with that piece. But it's, it's, it's simply the geometry of, of parking cars and as many cars as, as, you know, we think is necessary to make the building work. So, I, I just wanted to, to, you know, sort of continue the conversation in, in that way.
Yeah, I just, I, too much is being shoehorned into a small lot.
It is. It is a small lot.
It's just, it's too big.
Got it.
A parking garage, lot line to lot line is not something that's going to attract a lot of...
That's not going to...
And the other, I was being a little fresh, forgive me.
Can you use the microphone?
The, the, I'm sorry, what?
You have to use the microphone.
Oh, we have microphones. The, what was I thinking? Oh, I knew it. I think having it right up against the sidewalk is, emphasizes the elephant in the neighborhood. I don't take that personally. I'm not a big fan of, of little bitty green spaces that collect coffee cups and other pieces of trash. But I, but in that, on that street, I'm sure you noticed it, every single building on the street is setback. This one, however, is, as you show it. Which prevents you, by the way, from putting trees on both sides of Everett Avenue, which would, I think, would be nice.
Well, the, the, the building right next door has no setback, and it does have street trees...
Yeah, what is next door, anyway?
Sorry?
I only drive on Everett Avenue every day, right?
We can switch to one of the other views. It's a, it's one of three hotels.
Well, I mean, the hotel is setback, FBI is setback, the high school is setback, the, the new apartments.
There. So, th- this building has, has no setback, and it does have street trees in front of it. And actually, we, they are so cramped.
The hotel, yeah.
Correct. And they're so cramped and such an apology for street trees that we didn't feel like that was a, a smart approach to, to, to sort of go ahead and continue that offense.
But it is setback.
Sorry?
It is, it does have a setback in the front on Everett Ave. I mean, you know, I know it's small and the trees look, okay. It makes, makes me, um... I, it makes me think that it stands out more than it already does to have it... It's, it's very large. It's a, maybe a front, front story, a first-floor parking area that's, that's... Maybe that needs to be setback. Maybe, maybe the second deck can create a porch-like, I don't know. I, I, I feel, it's not a question of feelings, it's my aesthetic sense for what it's worth. I'm not in favor of, of generally speaking, lot to lot, lot, lot line to lot line. What else? That is, um... Oh, a, a technical question. Is the loading dock in, inside?
Yeah, there's, there's three, four totally enclosed loading docks, yeah.
And, and how many trucks can that accommodate?
Two 18-wheelers and, and two smaller panel trucks.
Okay. So, there, the likelihood of trucks waiting on Beach Street for...
The, the three, the three sort of main utility loading docks are on, on the back of Beach Street, yeah.
So, that's a separate, you can't get from one, the, the loading dock to the parking garage, right? I'm just trying to follow this floor plan.
Yeah. Well, so, it, it, we can, we can go to a, a floor, a plan of, of the parking deck and...
Yeah, let's just go over this...
Because you can, yeah, there's a, there's a stairway at, at the back. And I think if we, forward, we'll, we'll see. Yeah, if you continue in the other direction, John, we'll get deeper. There's a whole series of building floor plans at the end. Okay. Yeah, so, lo- loading dock is back on this side. And so, we, we've got an egress stair that, that goes right from, from that area into the parking garage, right back there.
I'm confused because that's the second and the fourth floor. So, isn't...
So, that's, that's the, the ground floor level with the loading docks on, on the, the ground floor, yes.
Okay, so as a pedestrian passes, there are some, um...
So, um, yeah.
Community spaces within the building, or are we just looking at a parking garage as a pedestrian passes?
On Everett Street, on Everett Ave. Yeah, so, on Everett Ave, if, I'm sorry, John, I keep going back and forth like this. If we could go to, to the site plan that has got the ground floor plan? So, there is parking entrance and, and here is, is loading dock that, that has trash. So, off to the, you know, we've got main entrance here, we've got restaurant entrance here, we've got storefront and so forth, which, which is the, the conference area. And then sort of off to the side here are those utility areas.
So, if so, if you were to move the facade of the first floor back some feet, for example?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the ground floor is, is ripe for, for, for setting back, yeah. The, the, the real difficulty we have is, is getting the radiuses and the parking spaces in, in the parking deck above. That, that's going to be the big challenge. That if, if, if it's, if it's a matter of, of creating more space at the street level, I think that's potentially a really interesting design approach. Yeah, we'd be very happy to consider that.
Obviously, endless approaches that you could take to the matter.
But it's in back, input and feedback like this that, that puts us into motion with some of these things, so, yeah.
So, what are we supposed to do tonight, John?
This is a public hearing because you have site plan review, but I actually have some questions. I forwarded a copy of my report to the board, and I have over a page of comments which have not been addressed.
Ah, okay.
So, I, how you, do you plan on addressing them, or do you...
Yeah, which ones are unaddressed?
Well, what are the sizes of the parking spaces? Because I, the board is going, if the board votes approve this, they need to vote to approve, not this board, the ZBA. They have to list all the relief you need. So, I need to know if you need relief for the parking spaces or not.
Okay.
Landscaping plan, a, a copy was forwarded, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Exterior lighting plan, signage plan. I have a, a whole list of them that should be addressed.
Okay, and so, we can scroll through the, you know, so, we have, we have each of those issues addressed in, in the package that you have? And, and we can point, we can go through those, those icons?
Well, I didn't see it in this package. And a landscaping plan would be a plan showing the location, the number and size of each, uh, uh, number and size of each species and type of plant. And obviously, a planting scheme for them.
Right, okay. So, if, if, we can provide additional detail for that, because we've got that light...
Yeah, I suggest that you look at it and do that for whatever next meeting is going to be.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause in terms of site lighting and the parking spaces and so forth, and, and, I mean, we used the list in putting the presentation together, we can run through each of those issues and point them out, if, if you like. So, we can, let's forward, go through, forward with the next slides and continue. So, we'll first address signage and, and exterior lighting, and so, we want to continue on to the elevations. Here we go. So, we have indicated with those icons, exterior lighting, fixtures in each of those locations. And then we've located sign and square footage on each of the, the areas that we intend to sign.
So, the signage, you'd also have to provide materials and the type of sign. Is it going to be lit? Is it going to be lit exterior, is it going to be lit interior?
Yes, so these are all...
The lighting, also details of the lighting as well. And the lighting, all lighting should be DOCSKA, International DOCSKA compliant.
Right, we understand that. Okay, yeah, and so, th- these are all internally illuminated signs, and we've, we've indicated the sizes that...
This is not a plan. This is not a sign plan. A sign plan is a separate sheet that actually indicates what the sign looks like, the materials, the thick, the thickness, the width, if it is extended up the sign. This does not do it.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Same for the lighting, this does not do it. I know you're showing them, but that, those are not sign plans that this board usually receives.
Okay, we, and so, we'll provide that detail. Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, understanding that there are other items to be addressed as well.
Do we need to open to the public?
That's a, to chair.
That's a...
This is a public hearing.
Are there members of the public who would like to address this matter? None? Okay. So, where do we stand, where do you motion, yeah?
Yeah, you have two votes. One is to recommend action to the ZBA. The other is an action on the site plan. Your options for the site plan are to approve, approve of conditions, or deny. Technically, you can't deny it because you just have to list what the site plan would have to, what they would have to provide on the site plan in order for it to pass. Or you could continue it pending receipt of additional information if, if you feel more is needed. Same for the recommendation.
Continue, ladies, getting continued nods from that side.
Yeah, the site plan should also show Chelsea High School and the pedestrian crossing. So, the greater context would be important to show.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The surrounding neighborhood should also show up on the site plan because it impacts the, you know, quarter of the lawn around it.
All right, do we have a motion?
I will make the motion that we continue this to the June meeting pending receipt of the, the responses to the... of the, the responses to the outstanding questions. I would also like to add to that, you know, if we, I mean, I know a month is rather fast, but it would also be useful to see some rendering of a smaller scale with a setback and reduced to eight stories.
Everybody understand the motion?
Is the motion just to continue it, or is the motion to ask them to reduce it to eight stories?
To continue with responses to John's questions, and I, I'm not necessarily stating that it must, at this point, that it must be, but I, I would like to see a plan of a smaller building.
Okay, so that...
Yep, and it's been seconded.
Let the motion, John, yes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you in June.
Yeah. I know, um, I know Mimi's not here, but you do need to, your next item is a elected representative of the Community Preservation Commission. Mimi did volunteer, Mimi is now serving that position, and she has volunteered to continue it if you so desire.
I nominate Mimi.
Do we need to make a nomination or a motion?
Make a motion.
I second your nomination. I'll third that.
You don't believe me, you don't want to be in that committee.
He did.
I'm a veteran.
Tuck made the motion, and Sarah...
I know, the chairman's not supposed to make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And now, you need to, now you need to let, make the motion to adjourn.
Made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? Nation was Sarah, but who made it, who seconded?
Um, second. Someone.
Did I second? Or I seconded?
Somebody did.
Okay, you're adjourned, thank you.